Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our February 28th Select Board meeting. I call this regular session meeting. We're out of executive session and into regular session at 7:01 PM. If everybody could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So we have a full house tonight because we have a couple recognitions. So I would like to ask Chief Ware to come up and speak of our Firefighter of the Year, Firefighter Dominic Galini, and our Communications Officer Natasha Kellogg.
Thank you for letting us come tonight. I'd like to talk to the, we have two things tonight from the Fire Department. Annually, the Exchange Club of Lawrence and the Andovers recognizes police, firefighter, and EMS recipients who have been nominated by their respective communities for something they've done during the year. Fortunately, they were able to have it this year in person. It was the first year they've been able to do it. After the last couple of years, they haven't been able to. So on February 23rd, they were, as I said, they were able to have it again. And the Fire Department recognized firefighter Dominic Galini as Firefighter of the Year for North Andover. I'm going to read a quick portion of excerpt from the letter that we wrote, that we presented that night. "Firefighter EMT Dominic Galini has been a valued member of the North Andover Fire Department since June of this past year. While off duty on August 14th, firefighter Galini came upon a serious motor vehicle accident collision on Route 28 South involving a single car accident in which two occupants were ejected. Firefighter Galini had just recently finished his five-week training program with the Fire Department, had just been assigned to a shift. Firefighter Galini did a quick survey of the scene, began triaging patients. As he surveyed the scene, he found two patients experiencing life-threatening multi-system trauma and a third patient experiencing minor injuries. Two had been ejected from the car. Firefighter Galini provided lifesaving care to the most critically injured in a calm and professional manner. The Gloucester Fire Department arrived on scene where firefighter Galini identified himself as an off-duty Fire Department member to the incident commander Deputy Chief Andrew McRobb, who wrote a commendation letter for him. Dominic continued to remain on scene, provided care to those injured until the Gloucester Fire EMS ambulances arrived and assumed patient care activities. He assisted the arriving ambulance crews in packaging of the patients and preparing the critically injured for transport to the designated trauma centers. Firefighter Galini's actions off-duty earn keeping with the highest honors and traditions of the North Andover Fire Department, and we're proud that he received this honor."
So firefighter Galini, we have a citation for you from, or a certificate of commendation from the Select Board. For your heroic actions on August 14th, 2021, when while off duty you provided lifesaving treatment to critically injured passengers in a motor vehicle accident on Route 128, your calm and professional assessment of the situation and immediate action gave the patients a chance of survival. The North Andover Select Board commend you for your quick response, knowledge, and willingness to assist people in distress. You are a credit to yourself, the North Andover Fire Department, and the community. On the behalf of the town of North Andover and its residents, we thank you.
The second individual we'd like to recognize tonight. It's not uncommon to pick up a newspaper and see firefighters at a fire or see a police officer involved or read about, you know, a major traffic stop, drug bust that the police do. But some of the people that don't get recognized very often are the emergency dispatchers, the communication officers, who we wouldn't show up on a call if they didn't answer it, triage the call, and send us appropriately to it. So today, I'd like to talk to you. On January 31st, excuse me, the North Andover Fire Department responded to 65 Marblehead Street for what was to become a second alarm fire in a residence. The early stages of a developing fire were very dynamic in the communications center with multiple high-priority tasks needing to be handled in a timely manner. Along with answering the emergency calls, communications officers must dispatch emergency apparatus, record arrival times, call mutual aid companies to fill needs both at the fire scene and to backfill stations. In addition, extra crews must be called in as well as filling requests for utility companies to cut power and gas services to the affected building. During this time, fire ground communications must be monitored for critical calls such as maydays or evacuation calls. That morning of January 31st, due to staff shortages, communications officer Natasha Kellogg was working the dispatch console single-handedly. Natasha not only handled these needs, but as the fire scene grew, she worked to meet the needs of the crews on the scene. I want to personally commend Natasha on the outstanding job she performed that day and the calm, professional manner in which she handled the situation. She performed all the tasks needed, answered all requests in a timely manner, and provided needed information quickly. Being a communications officer and manager, working fire single-handedly is far from an ideal situation, but she managed it as a professional to the best of her ability. I want to thank her for her diligent work and the service she provided to the North Andover Fire Department.
Natasha, we also have a certificate of commendation for you as well for your exemplary performance as a communications officer during a fire at 65 Marblehead Street on January 31st, 2022. Your management of the situation and the calm, professional manner in which you provided information was extraordinary. The North Andover Select Board commend you for your outstanding service to the town. You are a credit to yourself, the North Andover Police Department, and the community. On behalf of the town of North Andover and its residents, we thank you. Thank you, Chief Ware. And now we'll ask our Chief Gray of the Police Department to come up because we have another, we have the Police Officer of the Year, Sergeant Jay Stoudt.
Thank you. Just real quick too, as far as Natasha goes, I was working that morning, and to see her do her job the way she did was the absolute definition of calmness under pressure. So she really did a fantastic job. We're here for, as Chief Ware said, for the Exchange Club Officer of the Year. This year, it was a really easy decision. On June 30th, 2021, we had a third day of 95-degree-plus weather. And, you know, you see us working details out there, and, you know, it takes a special person to keep working in that condition. You know, you get a job, it starts at seven o'clock on a day like that, and by 7:07, you realize you made a mistake. However, Sergeant Stoudt is one of those people that works all the time and never complains. And on this day, he was working a detail at Middle Socks and Waverly. About 10 o'clock in the morning, a call came in for a woman that had had a seizure. He was less than 50 feet away, so while emergency crews were being dispatched, fire and police, he was on scene. The woman became unresponsive, not breathing. Sergeant Stoudt began a patient assessment and began performing high-quality CPR that was taken over by emergency crews that responded afterwards. And due to his actions at that time, the woman was transported and made a complete recovery. So we are very proud of Sergeant Stoudt for his actions. And as far as Sergeant Stoudt goes, one of my academy classmates, I couldn't be more proud of his actions. So on behalf of the Police Department, that's our Officer of the Year for 2021.
Sergeant Stoudt, we have a certificate of commendation for you as well. For your heroic actions on June 30th, 2021, when while working a private detail, you provided lifesaving CPR to a patient having a medical emergency. As a result of your immediate actions, the patient survived the event and made a full recovery. The North Andover Select Board commend you for your quick response, knowledge, and willingness to assist people in distress. You are a credit to yourself, the North Andover Police Department, and the community. On behalf of the town of North Andover and its residents, we thank you. Madam Chair, could we take a picture with the board and the two chiefs? And the three recognized? Okay, thanks. I'm the target for today. Sorry, I'm out of hats. So the two chiefs have, uh, Sergeant, Sergeant. I'd be Sarah, I'm Sarah right now. Channel Sarah. It's funny, go ahead. You're gonna do a great job, Barb. I'm coming. We can even stand close to each other. Get a smile, you're great here. Yes. Melissa, you had your camera set. You good? Yeah, we're good. All right. Congratulations. Thank you, Sarah, junior. I was probably.
You were, yeah, you were close up.
Probably because I, I close up for the other one. We don't want to, we don't want to be that close. Believe me, thank you. All right. Send these to my friend Sarah. She didn't cut anyone's head off, but she did a great job. What would be mine, it would be yours.
Where are my eyes, dude? Front, behind?
They're in front, they look nice. You guys just leave. I never want you to be there, it's very awkward, right?
Thanks all for coming in.
Thank you.
Thanks. I saw pictures on mine. No, I was talking to Chief Ware earlier. Yeah, what they did was they planned it for COVID. They tended to COVID, so we only had small.
All right. I will move on to public comment if anybody has any. No? Okay. All right. We will move on to our governmental reports. First, we have the sidewalk connectivity plan. I believe Jean Enright is here and John Borgesi. Oh, hi, Dan. Sorry, I didn't see you over there.
We're good?
We're good, John.
All right. Good evening. I'm John Borgesi, the Town Engineer. Jean Enright, Director of Planning. And remotely, we have Dan Beckley, Staff Planner. We're here tonight to present the sidewalk gap analysis and sidewalk proposed connectivity plan to the Select Board. I'm actually now going to turn it over to Dan Beckley, who will start by discussing the goals and initiatives related to the plan. Dan?
Thanks, John. Good evening, everybody. So there has long been recognition for the need of improvements to the sidewalk network in town. You know, it serves many important goals that the town has focused on for a long time from environmental, transportation, economic development, and is something that the Staff Planner before me was working on. So it's a project that I inherited. And if you wouldn't mind jumping to Slide 2, talk a little bit about those goals. So as I mentioned, the need for sidewalk connectivity has been, you know, recognized for a long time in town, but more recently in the 2016 Open Space and Recreation Plan, the 2018 Master Plan, and the Select Board's own goals. You know, the need to extend the sidewalk network and identify and address gaps was pointed out. And essentially recognizing this need and considering priorities identified in these goals, the Planning Department and DPW worked together to identify, you know, how best to address this. And so we used the Metropolitan Area Planning Council data, which uses a sort of proximity analysis for key destinations and looking at where there is population density to determine what the potential utility of a road would be if a sidewalk were added to it. And so eliminating roads that were either completely infeasible or had existing sidewalks, we tried to use this data as well as institutional knowledge and existing priorities to narrow down, you know, where we should be looking and where there is a serious need for sidewalks. Additionally, we looked at things like ongoing programs like gas restoration projects and capital improvement efforts. And the result was a 20-year proposal for sort of sidewalk build-out to improve connectivity. And part of that was looking at rough cost, which we'll talk a little bit more after we go over what this proposal is. And John's actually going to talk on the next slide a little bit about how we aligned this with existing street improvement and restoration efforts in the nearer term.
Great, thanks, Dan. So as Dan mentioned, you know, we developed the plan, but in addition, we wanted to make sure we coordinated this with any DPW improvements, of which we've actually started as part of the gas restoration project. Where we can, we've incorporated, you know, the sidewalk connectivity. And for example, we constructed sidewalk on East Water Street connecting to Route 125. In addition, we also constructed sidewalk on Brussels Street that connects Main Street to Pleasant Street. Similarly, you know, we're looking at bridging the gaps around the schools, the Sergeant School and High School. And in the near future, probably rolled in as part of our annual roads program, we're investigating extending the sidewalk on Chestnut Street and Holly Ridge around the Sergeant Street School. And then for the high school, looking at Walker Road and Harkaway. Again, trying to bridge the sidewalk gaps around the school areas and combine it with our annual roads program.
Great. So one of the metrics that MAPC uses for their sidewalk connectivity data is walking to parks. And so the walk to parks utility metric was, had, showed very high scores for the roads around town because of how widespread open space is in town, which is a great thing. But when we look at those scores relative to each other within the limits of the town, we see things that, you know, we probably expected, like there would be a high utility of sidewalks around Stevens Pond Beach and also near Wire Hill, which also scored well because it's near the high school. And so these were some of the areas we prioritized in the near term, both because they had overlap with existing goals like access to key recreation points and access to schools. But because this is a long-term vision, we also considered things farther in the future, like Bradford Street, which, you know, certainly would have some challenges and is less populated. So there's less demand for a sidewalk there now. But there's still a large, you know, open space out there and do live out there. So it is something we want to consider going into the future. Next slide, please. So looking at walking to schools, similarly with the number of school locations in town, there were a lot of great opportunities to choose from. But we focused on small gaps between existing sidewalks for the nearer term as feasible projects, like on Prescott Street and Chadwick Street, as well as in the longer term, including corridors that, for more direct pedestrian access further in the future. So a sidewalk on Route 125 would be a very high priority, especially as a safety matter. But we proposed that further out around like 2030 because as working with Mastot can, you know, make this a more complicated project because it's a state road. However, in addition to this, we looked at, you know, there's gaps we filled within a quarter mile of each of the schools in town. And so we're not just focusing around the high school or where there's big gaps, so we aim to balance that. And on the next slide, walking to shops had fewer clear opportunities as in more of the commercial areas around town sidewalks already exist. That's head in line with the Route 125 corridor study. Adding sidewalk to Route 125 is a high priority for improving safety. Again, as that's a Mastot road, we are looking further out. But in the nearer term, Hillside Road is a priority as that would directly connect to existing commercial and office-based density as well as the future Mastot shared-use path. And having gone over the plan a little bit, I'll pass it off to John to talk a little bit about funding and how this would work.
Thanks, Dan. So of course, funding, you know, assuming a base cost of $170 per linear foot, which I will say was a cost we saw prior to COVID. So I'm sure that has changed now. And, you know, estimates approximately 10.3 million for 10.7 miles. Again, that cost does not include design, permitting, survey, right-of-way investigation, potential upgrades necessary for drainage because once, if you install any curbing and there wasn't curbing there, now you got to figure out where's the water going to go to. So I just want to point that out. There's definitely going to be additional costs, not to mention what happens on the backside of the sidewalk, whether there's retaining walls, necessary curbing, edging, anything like that. But this equates to approximately $490,000 annually for the next 20, 21 years. There are other opportunities out there for grants to supplement the funding. You know, we have our Chapter 90, which we primarily use for the roadways, but I can use that for sidewalks also. You know, complete streets grants, housing choice grants, the Mass Works grants, and I'm sure there are other grants out there to supplement this. We currently are budgeting in our CIP now approximately $400,000 over the next five years. But that's for both repairs and new installations, new constructions, filling in the gaps. So, but it is a start towards trying to bridge those gaps. We also, just on the slide, Dan had actually investigated some other communities and their cost for what their program is for different sidewalk programs that they have, which you can see there.
John, I ask you, are you factoring in the rising cost of petrochemical? Meaning, is the asphalt and all of that kind of stuff?
Yep. The asphalt, believe it or not, asphalt hasn't increased as much as we would think or we saw last construction season. Of course, this coming construction season will be interesting to see, given everything that's going on. But yeah, absolutely. That's why, you know, in talking with the director, the $170, we don't think is, we think it's going to be well over 200 a linear foot easy, is what we're thinking, and probably even pushing higher than that.
Wow, that's a lot.
Yeah, it is. Yeah, yeah. And again, the unknown factor is a part that, you know, we, a simple, you know, something that's very flat, not a lot of drainage upgrades to do. You know, we feel a little more comfortable of doing like an asphalt or concrete sidewalk with granite curbing. Anything that gets into, you know, permitting, you know, whether it's conservation, a lot of these areas, I either have to cross a culvert or try to figure out how we're going to do that, obviously permit the construction through conservation and whatnot, so that, of course, is going to increase the cost.
John, are these all single-sided sidewalks? So it's just on one side of the street, right? You're not?
Yeah, so we're not trying to, we're definitely not trying to do double. Yeah, yeah, yeah. There are locations already where there's, you know, sidewalk on one side. And what we've done, at least during the gas restoration, where there were sidewalk on both sides, typically one side didn't go all the way. So we would try to get one sidewalk to connect, you know, bridge that gap for at least one sidewalk if we can. Yeah.
Does this include upgrades or, you know, to the current?
To the current, yeah. So this is strictly for filling the gaps. What I would say is the $400,000 that's in the CIP, we have been using for both. So what we're doing is, as we look at the annual roads program, we're now looking at the existing sidewalk that's there and not just kind of ignoring it and trying to make repairs. Similarly, when we get the calls to make the repairs, you know, during the year, whether we're paving the road or not, we're attempting to get out there and make those repairs now. Trying to be a lot more proactive because the current status of our existing sidewalks is not good.
It's tough, yeah. Especially with the trees and stuff that you saw, we saw in.
Yes. Trees are.
Yeah, they're, they're kind of eating up the sidewalks and making them almost impassable.
Actually, that's one of the other additional costs not factored in is I didn't have to, the $170 per linear foot, we didn't have to take any trees down or do any tree hearings or anything like that, so.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
Thing is, it's a plan, it's on paper, it gives these guys something to pull.
Absolutely. I will say, there are a lot of areas that were identified that are going to be easy to go after, you know, to bridge those gaps.
Much more challenging.
Yes, yes. There are some where I'm like, hmm, I don't know if I can do that one, but okay. And that's why we kind of push those out.
It's a good conversation at the time. I think it's a good segue into the next on the agenda, the complete streets, because this is going to be a topic of every one of those considerations too.
Yeah.
I will say, I am loving, the names of the streets I'm hearing you talk about are all the streets that are on, you know, that have been brought to our attention along the way, so.
Oh, good.
Thrilled.
Checking off a big part of the master plan, you know.
Absolutely.
And this just goes to the fact that, you know, we said when we created that master plan in 2018 and it wasn't just going to sit on a shelf like past master plans have, and we've taken, you know, we're taking positive actions in that way. And we've got one of the members of the committee here, the Master Plan Implementation Committee, that conceded that, say to that, speak to that as also. But it's great that, you know, we're seeing these things come off the page now and actually put in front of us. And, you know, we're taking action on them.
Yep, I agree.
One thought, obviously tremendous, big fan, master plan. But, you know, I'm wondering, you know, the message back to the community, you know, it's all about implementation. I'm wondering if there's a way that we could help the citizenry kind of feel more comforted by that there's a plan, it takes time, so forth. People are patient if they know what's coming down the road. And I'm wondering if there's any way for us to kind of get that message out through our, you know, town website. And I know, you know, we, Dan's working on all kinds of things for that. But this is one that I think a lot of people can relate to directly, to say, hey, I know it's coming. You know, it's sort of like your Christmas present, but it's down the road. This is a really powerful thing because people can relate to it. And it's about neighborhoods, it's not just my street. And I think that's the other thing that's really kind of great about this because, yes, you've got people right there immediately goes by their house or their business, but it's the people who use it in addition. And so there's kind of a multiplier effect. And that's why I think it's really important to have good visibility on this because of it's touching so many folks. So keep at it.
Yeah, we definitely can.
Awesome.
All right. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
You're very welcome. Thank you. Thanks, everyone.
All right, so we've talked about complete or sidewalks. Now we're going to go move on to complete streets.
It's this huge casting skill.
Can we just go to?
So it's Chrome.
Cast.
Yes. Well, no, is it because I'm on a Mac?
Yeah, this is Chrome cast, so there's an Apple PC. If you want, let's like.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I apologize. Max, the good and bad. My name is Liz Altman and I am the Director of Transportation Planning for TEC, who's we've been retained by the town to help prepare the prior to origination plan for complete streets funding, which is a Mast dot program. And, thank you. You just go to the first. Yeah, sure. I already messed it up. The, in the past five to seven years, Mast dot has really made a major effort in their directives and in their planning to put complete streets elements in all of their infrastructure programs that they are developing with state and federal funding. So those are sidewalks, bike infrastructure, maybe a shared use path, transit facilities, where possible, ADA upgrades, anything to make the streets more cohesive for all roadway users. So the complete streets funding program is essentially Mast dot putting their money where their mouth is, right? They're saying, we want to do this on all of our roads and we're committing to do this on our roads. We want the municipalities to do it on their roads as well, but we understand that they might need some help. So Mast dot has provided funds to municipalities for targeted accommodations on local roadways. And that is what the complete streets funding program is. Currently Mast dot has spent over $70 million on over 214 projects throughout the state. In the graphic, you can see all the orange communities. Those are communities that have been granted funds through this program. So there's three tiers in completing the, in requesting complete streets funding. Tier one is already been completed by the town, which is your policy, which was approved last year, saying, we want to do this, we're committed to do this. So right now we're in the middle of, or towards the end, actually, of the tier two, which is your prioritization plan, which is essentially what I like to call a master plan. It's not a master plan like your very well-done master plan for the town, but it is just a list of all the infrastructure locations that complete streets infrastructure would like to be placed. Either sidewalks, bike lanes, ADA upgrades, signal upgrades to help pedestrians cross the signals, improved access to transit. And then tier three is the construction funding application. So what we have done so far in the prioritization plan process is we've compiled all the studies, plans, projects, mapped areas of concern with town staff, gather input for residents. We had a very well-attended public meeting back in November. There were quite a few attendees there that gave us their input. And then we provided the town a draft list of projects. So what we're in the final stages of right now are prioritizing those projects. What I like to do is make sure that the top five to 10 are things that we really want to see done. The town really wants to see done in the next few years. It's supposed to be a five-year plan, but we have way more projects on there that could be completed in five years. Not all projects will be able to be funded by complete streets funding as it's only granted every four years. But it just shows that the town has considered a global approach to their complete streets. So we prioritize the projects by public interest, desirable destinations, needs and modes served, and then feasibility. So things that are a little less feasible are towards the bottom of the list, similar to your sidewalk plan that was just discussed. This is what the document looks like. It is a description of the project and then a whole row of checkboxes. The more checkboxes that we can check off, the more competitive the project is. So at the end of this process, our project number one will be the project that we apply for funding next month. And so we need to submit by April 1st, but I really would like to submit early to give Mast dot some their full four weeks to approve the prioritization plan because they always come back with even just generic comments. So we'd like to submit after this meeting in the next week or so to Mast dot. We get their approval and then apply for the four, up to $400,000 by the 1st of May. That's kind of where we are. If anybody has any questions.
So you're looking for us to approve, do some approval tonight to, so that you can move forward this March 11th, the Seminole?
Yes.
So do we know what, are these the projects that are, the one in front of us here? Are they the ones that are bubbling to the top or are these just examples?
Those are the ones that are bubbling to the top right now.
So you see the first one there, the Sutton High Street Chadwick intersection, I mean, that just sort of begs for, it just needs a overhaul, right? It's not, you can't fix it with one thing, a lot of moving parts.
Right.
And again, kind of to the sidewalks, it just connects so many, so many parts of our town. I think that's kind of the challenges, but also the opportunity, which is we have more things going in different parts of the town and people want to get there.
Right.
It'd be nice if we walked.
Right.
That's great. And accessibility piece too, that's.
Right, just trying to make it more friendly for all roadway users, not just the vehicles.
Just to clarify, we don't have to actually take both.
Right, we're just, okay.
No, we do not.
I was like, I don't think we do.
I was like, I don't care.
No, no, it's just, you know.
I'm like, I'm going to start writing motion.
So did the, so the sidewalk projects and this complete streets program and funding will kind of overlap, right? And funding and we'll be able to do both sort of, right?
Right, so a number of those sidewalk projects are in the complete streets master plan, the, some of the more farther out ones. We did not include all the currently programmed gas restoration ones because those are currently already in the, being, going to be completed, so.
And you said this money only becomes available once every five.
Every four years you're, you're eligible. So they've become very strict on that, but.
Seems like such a drop in the bucket for four years.
I know, but they are trying to spread it around over 300 and what-odd communities.
So the $400,000 is for four years, is what we're.
Is for one targeted project, so.
And just looking through the projects a little bit, when you guys do these streets and the intersections, like specifically High Street and Green Street and we get a lot of emails about traffic, will you implement traffic calming studies and measures as part of those?
The hope is with the complete street application, you can narrow the roadways with the sidewalks. You can visually narrow roadways with striping for, or installation of bicycle lanes or again with a shared use path if it's too many vehicles or too high speed of a road that you wouldn't want to bicycle on the roadway. You would make a shared use path that's a little wider, separated facility. Yes, and and the idea on some of these big wide intersections that people are trying to cross, a very long crosswalk, you want to narrow them down as much as possible while maintaining transit access if necessary or school bus access. But to really slow people down, those big wide curves, people can get, just drive very fast around them. So you want to narrow those up. So that's a lot, you know, we tried to incorporate those into the sidewalks.
Yeah, specifically to the Milk Street Chestnut Street intersection. I know there's a curve that I'm sure people take very quickly and there's a lot of kids going to Franklin, to the parks over there. And when you present these changes, I assume you notify butters, right, and have their input?
When we get to that.
When you get to those.
Right.
Right, yeah.
So I mean, first thing we have to do is, I got the grant funding.
Yeah, no, I know, they're all great projects. I just, you know, they they start bubbling up, you know, the comments that we get and the emails and stuff like that.
I think it's just good to when people see that they're heard, at least on the plan somewhere that, you know, as if things can change, once you're outside of the top five, things can change rapidly.
Drastically, yeah. Okay. Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Jean's back again. Okay. So continuing with our governmental reports, we are going to have Andrew Shapiro and Lori Berzlaugh come up and talk about the survey results from the American Rescue Plan Act survey that we had put out to the residents.
Lori and I coordinated so much on this, but we didn't talk about where we were going to sit. Drop that. Oh, it's my desktop.
Where's Jean?
Talk to her. Unreal.
Should have used Jean's.
I know, right? I just want to make sure I'm casting the tunnel right now. It's like, yep. Let's see if that works. All right. Oh, because I'm still plugged in. There we go. Beautiful. All right. For the record, Andrew Shapiro, Director of Community and Economic Development. As you know, I'm here with my colleague Lori Berzlaugh, Director of Administrative Services. We're here this evening to talk to you all about the Town's American Rescue Plan Act, otherwise known as ARPA, Resident and Business Survey Results. And so what we'll be going over tonight is just a brief overview, a reminder of what ARPA is, the funding objectives, its eligible uses, how the town will manage ARPA funding, the need for community input and onboarding of Polco, which you'll learn about a little more when we go through our slides. Polco is a polling company we've engaged. A review of survey questions and responses and funding priorities and possible uses of the ARPA funding. So just a quick overview, it was, ARPA is part of what's known as the American Rescue Plan, which was enacted back in March of 2021. It allocated $350 billion for state, local, and territorial governments to respond to the COVID-19 emergency and to obviously help heal our economy and bring back jobs. North Andover was allocated over, a little over $9 million in funding through this program. And recently, I think recent, as recent as last month or January 2022, the US Treasury released its interim, it says interim final rule here, but it really is the final rule. So that's a, that's a typo, my apologies, to set forth the eligible uses for funding. So there are four funding objectives that we'll go over, as well as six eligible use categories. And it stipulates that funding must be used by the end of 2024, or excuse me, obligated by the end of 2024 and spent by the end of 2026. So just an overview of the funding objectives that were mentioned. So number one is supporting urgent COVID-19 response efforts to continue to decrease the spread of the virus, replacing lost public sector revenue, which will strengthen support for vital public services and to help to retain jobs, supporting immediate economic stabilization for households and businesses, so general economic development, as well as addressing systemic public health and economic challenges that have contributed to the unequal impact of the pandemic. So, you know, very much focusing on inclusion and focusing on communities that have been disproportionately affected by the results of the pandemic. So in terms of eligible uses, and these are just kind of broad swaths of eligible uses, funding can be used to support public health response, replacing public sector revenue loss, water and sewer infrastructure, which is obviously a huge big-ticket item, addressing negative economic impacts, premium pay for essential workers, and broadband improvements in infrastructure. And something new that has sort of emerged since the final rule has been introduced is now up to $10 million can be used for lost revenue and general municipal purposes. So what that means is, given that North Andover has received a complement of a little over $9 million, which is obviously under that $10 million, we have a broad amount of flexibility with with the funding that we can, that we can use. So how will the town manage funds? So I believe the last time the town manager addressed you on this issue, she had mentioned that we might participate with a consortium of other municipalities in terms of undertaking administrative management of the program. But with, you know, upon issuance of the final rule, reviewing the information that's in that document, we conferred with the finance director and, you know, she believes that we can, we have sufficient resources to handle the management of the funds in-house, so we'll proceed in that manner. The town, we're also looking at utilizing ARPA funding to secure the services of a grant writer and/or administrator to help us sort of pursue, you know, all of the available resources through this program, but also to kind of seek other resources beyond this program. We've been pretty active on the on the grant front recently. But I think despite how successful we've been, there's all the more opportunities out there, given all the action coming through the federal government, so we want to take advantage of that. So public input and engagement, so really, this slide is really meant to represent the fact that the Treasury, through its final rule and through all the ARPA guidance, urges local governments to reach out to community members, to people, to really understand what its critical needs are and what it's seeing as the best use of ARPA funding. So we partnered with Polco, which is a polling service company, to administer a survey to gauge public sentiment about how the town should prioritize prioritize these funds. And what this will initially do in this initial round of survey work will establish a benchmark. So then when we continue to survey over the next four years, which we will do, we can kind of see how the results bear out over a four-year period of time versus the benchmarks that we have initially marked in this first survey. Designed around Treasury guidelines, the surveys will help to assess community needs, align funds with economic priorities, address equity and inclusion, and document progress. So both residents and businesses have been and will continue to be surveyed. And just a little more information about Polco, they provide online polling tools for local governments, as been discussed. They've been, their products were developed by former former public servants and data scientists. The civic engagement platform delivers real-time verified resident opinions to guide decision-making. And their research is used for decision-making, budgeting, planning, performance measurement, and more. As you can see from the graphics below, they're associated with the nationally recognized National Research Center. They've launched over 500 communities, answered over 60,000 questions, and have over 25 years of benchmark data. And just to dive a little deeper into what type of data the polling sorts, tries to get at, it does try to identify needs and baseline measurements. I mentioned the baseline measurements as sort of our starting point. point. Gauge residents, resident satisfaction with community amenities and government services, establish a baseline for performance measurement. So an example of that type of question could be, please rate the overall economic health of the, and it says here the county, just note that these are example questions, these weren't specific questions from our surveys. So it says county, which is kind of a government of a bygone era around here. Next, it tries to understand stakeholder knowledge, sentiment, and behaviors, so understanding, you know, maybe what the public doesn't know as much about. Identifying stakeholder interests and measuring behavior. So example questions could be, what sort of amenities would you like to see more of downtown? How often, if ever, did you attend the farmer's market in the last 12 months? We're also looking at prioritizing initiatives and alternatives. So engaging residents on fund resource allocation and budgeting, determining community priorities. For instance, how important is it for the town to focus on economic development? How much do you support the town giving tax incentives to businesses to move downtown? And then, of course, evaluating performance. So periodic surveys to provide performance metrics. Please rate the overall economic health of the county. And these could also be questions directed about how the town has performed in delivering certain types of services as well. So with that, I will toss it to Lori to continue the conversation.
Thank you. So the survey itself, Polco, Polco sent out 4,000 postcards to households back in November. They gave them until December 29 before they closed the survey. And out of that, 325 residents responded, and the survey was available in English and Spanish. And if you did not have a computer, or you weren't tech savvy, and wanted to do it by hand, we also had paper copies available that we did mail to residents who requested. We had a couple of seniors request it, a printed copy. A couple weeks after the postcards were mailed, they did open it up to the entire town. So we had the survey sent out through the town website, Facebook, Twitter, our email list, and 82 residents responded to that. The businesses, again, postcards were sent out, same outreach methods, and 58 completed surveys were received from the businesses. So what this chart shows here is the results of the resident survey. And you can see that safety, natural environment, and the economy all received high ratings. Education, arts and culture, inclusivity, and mobility were what residents rated our lowest areas. The most important topics, which are areas that residents believe we should focus on over the next 12 months, were the economy, utilities, education, arts, and culture, and inclusivity. Since the economy was already highly rated, it's not a critical focus topic for us, so those three boxes there show what our critical focus topics are. And the utility one, we weren't surprised at, considering our town went through the Columbia gas crisis, and we also have a number of power outages, from what I understand, more than other towns. Not really sure why. So we're not surprised by those results, but in the next survey, we're going to drill down that to make sure that we divide it out to see where exactly people are thinking that the utilities are something that wasn't as rated as high as we'd like, because we, we're thinking that it's because of the Columbia gas thing, and not really people are unhappy with water and sewer.
Can I just interject for a second, too?
Sure.
So also, you'll note that, you know, given that mobility and inclusivity were rated as critical focus areas that didn't receive as high marks, it's, you know, pretty prescient with the topic we just discussed with respect to complete streets and sidewalks connectivity. I think these two issues, inclusivity and mobility, are kind of intrinsically linked. You know, people that feel marginalized, sometimes it's as a result of being able, not being able to access certain things, and mobility plays into that. So having stronger infrastructure and access to certain areas of town or resources, I think is definitely going to be critical going forward. And it's going to take more than just ARPA to address those things, it's going to take things like complete streets and our infrastructure funding, so.
Okay, so this next slide shows the business results, and the critical focus topics there again were utilities and inclusivity. So basically, generally, they had the same opinions as, as the residents, where safety, economy, and the environment were all rated high, and utilities and inclusivity needed to be focused on over the next 12 months. One of the questions that was asked was, we know the COVID-19 pandemic has been challenging in many ways. Please rate how much of a problem, if at all, the following ARPA household currently? And there were 31 categories. So these are the top six, with the top three being emotional health of household members, feeling like your voice is heard in the community, and exposure to COVID-19 was definitely rated a major or moderate problem that residents were facing.
Interesting to note that in the top six, knowing what services are available in the community, that sort of, you know, for all the efforts that we've done, you know, reach out, literally knocking on people's doors, that still one in five respondents are saying, we don't know what's available out there, so that's a...
It is interesting, because we do, I mean, we think we do a pretty good job of getting information out there, especially during COVID. We made a lot of phone calls, we, you know, did a lot of outreach, so.
And I just, I think you, you know, you could go around to a lot of municipalities throughout the Commonwealth, I think you'd hear probably a lot of the same thing. I think a lot of people feel like, you know, they don't know what's going on in their own hometowns sometimes, and it's, it's challenging, you know. Not everyone's hooked into social media, for instance. Those who are, don't necessarily see everything. You know, it's very difficult to reach everyone and every, you know, at their, at their place of business or where they live. It's challenging. And there's so much information, right? You know, it's just, it's, especially now during COVID, there's just a lot to share.
Even robo calls, a lot of people don't have their landlines anymore.
That's true.
Right.
Yeah.
It's good to see it, though, because it does challenge us to think about other ways that we can communicate. So. We need a town crier.
We do.
Well, because Dan. I was going to say, Dottie Stewart.
Okay, so next is the, what the businesses said were their biggest challenges, not really any surprises here. You know, shortage of skilled employees, employees getting burned out due to increased workload, and COVID-19 exposure of employees were the top three. They had nine categories to choose from. And just with both the resident and the business results, I think it's important to remember that it was a snapshot in time when we were in the midst of Omicron, and that surge, and the holidays, and people's stress about whether they're going to be able to meet with their relatives, and, you know, all the uncertainty that was going on at that time. We think that the next survey, when we release it in six months, will probably reveal different challenges and concerns, because obviously it's going to be whatever the time that they're taking the survey, so. This shows the impact of COVID-19 on businesses. So one in five businesses surveyed reported laying off employees. About half reported revenues lower than projected for 2020. 56% of businesses are back to pre-COVID levels or are doing better than before. And about one in five businesses report it will take six-plus months to return to pre-COVID levels. So hopefully, when we do the next survey in six months, we'll get a better results as far as where our businesses are at, at that time, and whether they've been able to get back to their pre-COVID levels.
But Lori, with all that's going on in the world right now, and the high energy costs, that whole thing could just go right out the window.
It's, like I said, it's a snapshot in time, so it's, whatever's going on at that time is, is going to dictate what people's priorities are.
I, I agree with you, I'm just a little worried that it might not be too much better in six months, but.
You haven't broken down at all, not necessarily for us, but by what types of businesses.
I don't...
There was a breakdown, for instance, of respondents for the residents, and I'm just trying to think if there was a similar one for the businesses.
I think the only way that they separated it was where you were located in town.
Okay, that would be interesting.
But I can look into that further to see if, well, and then by number of, so they did break it down. Some of the questions were whether you're locally owned or outside the community. Are you a woman-owned business, minority-owned business? Your number of employees. So those categories, and they did, what type of industry you're in?
Yeah, that's, okay.
So we could look at that question and the results of that question, which are also in the packet, the 104-page.
215 pages, yeah.
It's question 16 in the businesses, it should show what the results were for that, so that would break it down.
Cool, thank you.
Fifty-six percent, right? I mean, I, I'd love to know how that stacks up across the state. I get a, I had a hard time believing that's not the top quartile.
No, I think that's a strong number.
That is a really strong number.
It's a testament to all the hard work you guys have done.
I was going to say, we, you know, I think that something, you know, the town manager and I and others focused on was really support to small businesses. You know, as you all know, we tapped into our, and we were fortunate in this regard, unfortunate and fortunate at the same time. We had, you know, the Columbia gas money to dip into, and we utilized that pretty early on, and then throughout the pandemic. And we did a number of things. We gave information on how to get access to technical assistance, free technical assistance, access to help apply for those PPP loans through the federal government. And for a while, that was sort of not as accessible to smaller businesses. So, and then free PPE. And then more recently, just recently, we did an outreach on, and this was during Omicron, providing businesses free access to test kits. So, yeah, we've really done everything we could, I think, as a local municipality to sort of reach out to our business community and make sure that, you know, there was access to resources. And obviously, still doesn't, you know, solve every problem out there. This question, there's definitely hurdles, but I'm really proud of the way that the town responded as a whole, so.
Was there any feedback? I see one out of five businesses surveyed reported laying off employees, but any feedback on businesses not being able to get employees? Or was that in it, too?
Well, that was one of their prior, top concerns.
Yeah, if you... Oh, was it? Did I miss that? I'm sorry.
So I backed, I just backed into...
A shortage of skilled employees.
Yep.
50%.
Rated a shortage of skilled employees as problematic, which was one of the biggest, which was the highest response for that issue.
One of the things that we thought about trying to figure out is what type of skill are they looking for? Like, is there some kind of training that we could do through community partners, or whatever? What kind of skill is it? You know, is it generally the same type of skills that we could help, or is it all different types of businesses? It's hard to know.
Maybe some outreach vocational schools would be helpful with that as well, even just evening programs or something.
I know you all heard from my colleagues at Merrimack Valley Planning Commission and the TDS program, or Targeted Economic Development Strategy. And, you know, one of the things we've done is we've coordinated with them on outreach to manufacturing types of businesses. So not necessarily sort of Main Street mom-and-pop restaurants and retail, so to speak, but more along the lines, like I said, of sort of manufacturing jobs. We know that a lot of those businesses have had challenges retaining employees, hiring employees, and so we provided, we kind of coalesced a, well, they, the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission, helped to organize sort of a, an event with different thought leaders on how to hire and retain workforce. So we thought that was a valuable thing to do. And we've continued to sort of reach out to these employers. I reached out to Crusader Paper recently. We've been having discussions about how we can better support them on employee retention and things like that, and getting them access to state programs. So it's kind of one of those things where you kind of have to triage it in some ways. It's hard to provide the blanket support for something this critical, but when you're reaching out to individual businesses and seeing what the specific issue is in their industry, or what they're focused on, sometimes that's the best way to do it. It's challenging, it's time-consuming, but it's some, sometimes it's kind of the way you have to do it.
So the other important question that they asked, which really is what, you know, the main purpose of the survey, it was also to, the question was, federal guidelines have been established for local government use of ARPA funds. Please rate how important, if at all, you think it is for North Andover to spend the community-level ARPA funds on each of the following areas. And here they had 16 areas that they listed. So our residents felt that we should put our funding towards services to address behavioral healthcare needs increased by the pandemic, like mental health treatment, substance abuse, et cetera, economic aid to households experiencing housing, food, or other financial hardships, and services or programs to promote healthy childhood environments, expanded childcare, or enhanced services for child welfare-involved families and foster youth. And then, for the businesses, same 16 areas, their top rated was economic aid and assistance to small businesses and nonprofits experiencing financial hardships due to the pandemic, economic aid to households, and then the increased services to address the health of communities and residents hit hardest. So interestingly, three of the four top priorities are the same for both businesses and residents. And even though the number-one priority for businesses wasn't rated as a top, one of the top five for residents, 65% of residents still believed that economic aid and assistance to small businesses was very important or essential. So we're, they're basically on the same page with what our funding priorities are, and what everyone believes is essential or important. So what have we done so far? So like Andrew had said earlier, we're looking at a grant project administrator, which we're, to be determined, the amount of money that will be spent on that. We've increased our community support coordinator staff, town hall staffing assistants. There is, there are several departments that were impacted by COVID, like veterans, HR, payroll, different challenges that they're having now with, with the COVID, with COVID. Cybersecurity, which we all know is a huge issue. Professional development for the health department staff, COVID tests, which we've received already, Polco, the survey company, COVID communications, which is our increased hours for our social media specialist. Sarah has been wonderful of getting out the weekly COVID reports and all the information. And then the health department nurse. So, so far, $439,334 has been earmarked or spent.
You know, remember, we didn't rush to spend money because, one, we knew we had a lot of time, and two, I'm glad we didn't, because both the federal government and the state have come out now with all sorts of grant programs for things that were originally eligible. So there's a lot of different avenues now for earmarks, et cetera, as well as having our grant writer apply for some of those. So we've tried to be pretty strategic in how we've spent so far, which obviously has not been very much, so. Hey, Lori.
So in speaking with the superintendent and department heads, these are some of the ideas of potential spending allocations. So thanks to a grant that Andrew received for the ADA Transition Plan, where we are, we have that grant to write the plan, but it doesn't cover actually implementing it, so we could use some of the money for the implementation of that plan. Water and sewer improvements, including stormwater, infrastructure at the schools, programming to address mental health, storefront facade improvement program for commercial storefronts, or other financial support for small businesses, which Andrew has mentioned a couple. Education, arts, and culture grants for nonprofits, so we were thinking sort of like the cultural council, how they issue grants, we could maybe either allocate some money to them, so that they have a bigger pot of money to give out, or think of some of our own. Two counselors, one would cover K through five, and one would be shared with the middle school and the youth center. Adult education programming, social-emotional inclusion through, and that would be through community programs and Rick Galant, the one that Rick Galante manages. A temporary gym at the ABECC, which is interesting because they are 25 years out on our master plan, I think, for their gym. And Assistant Superintendent Mealy found a temporary gym that should last 15 years. So it's an interesting concept. So we're, we're looking at that. I think it's along the lines of the, the bubbles that you see.
Interesting.
So it's interesting, but it's an, it's an option. Replacing the water stations with, water bubblers with water filling stations, which would be at all the school buildings. And then refurbishing of the high school auditorium was another idea, because we could use it for community arts and education.
Why no counselor for the high school? Why no counselor for the high school? Or are they fully staffed?
I think that they're staffed. This came directly from the superintendent, so it was their input that they had recommended the two counselors, K through five.
My question is, so if we implement some of these things, including additional staff, then what?
So they'll, what will happen?
Just like how we used our SR funds, just like how we use the CARE Act funding, when you bring people on for a one-year appointment. So for instance, if you think about how we brought people on to, when we brought on the community support coordinator, that's a three-year, that's funding for three years. So she received a three-year appointment letter. So we bring them on, knowing it's only a short-term position. Would the ultimate goal be, if the need is still there, to try to... Would the ultimate goal be if the need is still there to try to, to create these positions moving forward? Maybe, but we also recognize that we are confronting a problem that we're currently seeing due to COVID. And there's definitely mental health issues that exist that we had never seen before. And so the, the current goal is to use this staff and this programming and this to address those. So we're very careful about how we draft the letters. She's like, yes, we are, when we do these short-term positions.
So I have a question. I don't see anything on here. I mean, so what came up fairly high in both the business and residents was economic aid. And I don't see anything on there in the list here, unless I'm missing it.
For businesses or for residents?
Well, it was both, right? So for businesses, it was economic aid to households, and for household residents, it was economic aid to households. So what, what on here kind of addresses that?
So we did receive already the hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant from the state for the food insecurity. It's a hundred or a hundred and fifty?
Oh, was that? I don't think I saw that. Because it went directly to.
Directly to the YMCA.
Yeah, to the groundwork.
Yeah, so this is, this is what I, kind of what I meant about the earmark. So we had put a bunch of earmarks in that we actually got, which was amazing. Some of them were for more community support coordinators, some of them were for food insecurity. One of them was for, actually partnered with Andover for a joint health evaluation for both communities to kind of give us an idea of more things we could use to spend this money on. So we've kind of come at it from several different angles, but one of them was the food insecurity angle. We could, we could look again at the rent program, which was successful.
So I'll just quickly interject and say, you know, the storefront facade improvement program, and, and I, I was purposely broad here in saying other financial support for small businesses. You know, we've already seen a couple of different communities, Beverly being one of them, and I forget the other one I saw recently, maybe it was Tuxbury, come out with grant programs for small businesses. Now, mind you, we were doing that while they were not doing that during COVID. So we kind of have a head start on that. Not to say we shouldn't continue to do that or continue to sustain that, but there's other, you know, there's potential other ways to do this. We could potentially, for, just as an example, we could seed a revolving loan fund. You know, we, we focus a lot on grants. The, the, the challenge with grants is it's like money out the door and you never see it again. And yes, it could, it can make a really big difference in the health of a business, but it's kind of like, it's gone. To the extent that we can create sustainable programming, that kind of continues to sort of be the gift that keeps on giving, if you will, that's definitely the gold standard if we can do it. So we could partner with a CDFI, like Mill City's Community Investments in Lawrence, to help administer a loan fund. They can do low barrier to entry, low interest loans, and they'd be microloans. It would be like fifteen, twenty, thirty, forty thousand dollars a pop. And then assuming these loans get paid back, you recapitalize that funding and you can loan out to other businesses and kind of keep the cycle going. And then the storefront facade improvement program, you know, obviously it's beautification for downtown. It makes the downtown more investable. Hopefully you attract more investment in the long term. You improve your tax base by doing that. You help local construction workers and jobs. And so it, that's, that's a very well-rounded sort of way of approaching it. So I, I think it's just, it's going to take a lot of thought, discussion, seeing what other cities and towns are doing, seeing what's successful, seeing what's not, having discussions and sort of thinking about it really holistically, I think.
And these were, these were ideas too. It's not an exhaustive list, and it doesn't mean we're going to do all of them or, you know, it's.
With the risk of why? Killing me. The credit card, I mean, the debit card thing was a great program that, you know, put money both into businesses and to people's hands.
So it's funny you say that. Andrew and I, it doesn't, I'm happy with it.
Well, I just remember the administration of it was.
It was. And Andrew and I had long, very.
It's poetry.
Very excitable conversations about the business card, about the gift card program. But we did talk about, and which is, I, it's why we added the other financial support things also is because we thought we could try to come up with an idea that would benefit both the residents and the businesses.
We try to figure out ways to leverage the money too.
Yes, somehow.
To have it go the furthest, be used again and again.
Right. And that, that card program was open to everybody. So you didn't have to be a resident of North Andover to participate in that program. So that would be like a, another thing that we would want to think about is if we want to provide some kind of aid to the houses that were impacted by COVID in North Andover, then we really have to figure out a program where it's going to be just for the residents of North Andover, where the gift card program really reached a lot of people, I mean.
And, and, you know, I'll just quickly jump in with, you know, I did have a few conversations with Lori about it, and I do, I do see the benefit of it. I do see the benefit of it, and I think it's a great program. I think it was very successfully implemented here, there's no question. And I know that the, both the residents and the businesses have appreciated it. My challenge in thinking about it is just that it is, and it has nothing to do with the administration, that's fine. You know, it's no problem putting a little elbow grease into a program if it means the greater good. But it's one of those things where I worry, I'm thinking to myself, if it comes to be expected on a yearly basis, you know, what happens when you don't provide it? You know what I'm saying? Like, are we, it, it goes back to the issue of sustainability, like how sustainable of a program is it?
I find every time I debate this.
That's my only issue with it.
It's off it.
It doesn't have to be a yearly program. It's a, it's a, it's a one-time, you know, boost to your, to, you know, get out there. And maybe it's cards that just go to North Andover residents and can only be used at North Andover businesses, is the thing, you know. Similar to what the merchants do, you know.
I, I think the balancing act here is, you know, this is about recovery. And sometimes recovery is, you know, tertiary, it's taking care of the immediate, and that's where I think you're going with the, the mental health sort of thing. Okay, that's time and place to try and get people stabilized or kind of on their feet. And then you're talking about things that hopefully have some perpetuity to them. And one of the things that, that strikes me is the idea of these loans. Because if you look at the interest rate horizon ahead for the next, you know, we'll call it three years, right? The ability to get small loans at a cost-effective rate is going to be really difficult. And so the opportunity to really leverage that money and to get it back, you know, theoretically, if you can offer significantly below market, people are going to take advantage of it. Businesses will. How do we know that? Because we had the PPE, right? I mean, that, that's what it was. Now you've got a repayment factor, so that's a way to keep that rolling and maybe feeds back into some things that when we do look at, we want to keep those positions there. And that's maybe one of the ways that you, you know, can do that. So I would encourage thought process on, on trying to take a chunk of this that can reseed itself more than just what the service is. Because you don't have the opportunity really to start off with as big a bucket as we do with this, right?
And just going back to your question, Jenna, it's page one ninety-eight.
Yeah.
And.
I didn't get that part.
So I'll just, I'll quickly read you what, what the industries were. So fifteen percent were manufacturing and production, seventeen percent shopping, retail, and hospitality. Thirty-nine percent of the respondents were professional services, like business, financial technology. Medical and health services, twelve percent, and then personal services like salon, dog walking was two percent, and then there's fifteen percent other. So those were the percentage of the respondents on the business side.
Did you get any feedback from, is it, from the company, the survey company about, are, you sent it out to four thousand people? Like, what, is that a normal response or is it low or high or?
Yeah, it was the first question I asked. I actually asked if we could extend the response time.
Yeah.
Because I felt like that wasn't a good percentage, but according to them, it is normal.
Okay.
So.
Would their consideration be for the next time? When will the next time they survey people be? Will it not be around the holidays?
Right, right, yeah. So it'll be over the summertime when everyone's on vacation. There's always some. So we'll have to think about that and the timing and, you know.
It does, there's, there's always something.
But they did say that it's, it wasn't an unusual response. Because I, I felt the same way. I'm like, we sent out four thousand surveys and only three hundred and twenty-five people responded, but they said it was pretty, pretty normal.
I know, but it is still disappointing. That's a lot of surveys and a pretty low number in the scheme of just statistics.
Yeah, yeah, it's true.
I know, that's exactly what I was thinking. Same percentage.
I was wondering, because when I was looking at the statistics of who responded, I forget whether it was if you have children under the age of seventeen or the age that caught my attention, but it was almost like that the group with kids in the school system didn't respond. I wonder if we could send them through, through the schools. I wonder if that would catch their attention.
That's a really good idea.
If that would catch them.
We've talked about the email list that, we consider the town email list, that when Sarah sends out a blast, about merging that with the school or having, if the superintendent sends out weekly newsletters or monthly newsletters? Is it monthly? I'm not sure. To try to capture it in there, so, yeah.
Yeah, I think that maybe that would capture that age bracket.
Oh, no, that repetition is the key. On the seventh time you send it to me, I'll be like, all right.
I agree with that, except blasting them with the town newsletter on the website on maybe a robo-call of people getting aggravated about.
The tricky part about this that I personally found was like, okay, I get the postcard in the mail. That does not correlate to direct clicking on a link, right? That was the sticking point, I think, for probably a lot of people.
Well, one thing that I could say, I did go through the survey, and it was very long. And I think, you know, I wouldn't be surprised if a lot of people said, you know, like ten, you know, halfway through it and said, I'm done. You know, because it was very long, there were a lot of questions.
It was.
And they seemed redundant.
We were concerned about that. The next survey certainly is not going to be this long. Melissa and I actually spoke with the company at length about how we sort of envisioned, you know, maybe six questions, seven questions. Not twenty-three. But because it's a national survey that they're trying to benchmark for the nation, this initial survey is the same that goes to everybody in the nation, and it's a way for them to benchmark. So now that we've got our benchmark out there, we can now tailor it a little better to North Andover. Like I said, drilling down on that utilities piece, splitting that out, and shortening it for sure.
I think they also spelled North Andover wrong on the card, and that was, I know that was a problem because I was like, I couldn't figure it out. I'm like, wait a minute, where's that R?
It's real, right?
Yeah.
You know, like, yeah, that's, that's.
It was difficult. And we were used to using Flashville where we were getting nine hundred responses, right? So because Flashville's easy and people like the buzz around it, yeah. So I think we, we were discouraged that we didn't get as many responses as we had last time. But we'll have to create buzz around this too, so go from there.
Thank you so much. Because I think, and I've heard from other communities that they feel not heard, that residents don't feel heard about what is important to them with the ARPA funding. So the survey and the work that you guys have done to date in gathering that feedback is really commendable and appreciated, so thank you.
Thank you.
I wonder if in the newsletter, we could put results of the survey and just, just say, you know, we're listening. Our next survey comes out, be on the lookout, please fill it out, that kind of thing. Maybe if they, they kind of can buy into what, even if they did or didn't do it, as to, well, what do we get?
I think also if people realize that their answers are actually creating policy and creating the projects, it may make people want to be more involved, so.
But that could tie into a nice little spot in the newsletter. People do seem to read that because they'll say to me, what? In the newsletter I saw.
Because it gets in everybody's house.
Ma'am, sir, could I request that we take one item out of order? If we could go to new business item B, I think we have a gentleman here who's patiently waiting. And I don't think this item will take very long, and I know he's got young children at home, so.
Are we gonna allow?
What's that?
I said, are we gonna allow the, the baseball parade?
We have a young man, we have a gentleman here waiting to talk to him.
We will certainly take that out of order so you don't have to continue to listen to us.
My name is Tom Sullivan. Thank you for taking the time to move that up. Mark had to get going. I was just looking for approval for the parade on April thirtieth of the North Andover Baseball League, Youth Baseball.
Yeah.
They changed instead of North Andover Little League.
Little League Youth Baseball, yeah. It's a wonderful parade. It's been, we've, it's been, weather and COVID, I think, so it's been.
Yeah, it's the first year I've been part of.
Okay. So it's been a few years since we've had it, but the kids all love.
Two or three, I can.
Yeah.
I think they said it would have been the third year that they didn't have it because of the.
I want to say it's third year, yeah.
I think it's the third year.
Yeah. So very excited.
The kids love it.
They do, yeah. The kids enjoy being part of it.
So I'll move and select the board approve the request of the North Andover Youth Baseball to use Water Street, Main Street, Waverly Road, and Dana Street on April thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, from eight fifteen to ten AM on, for their annual opening day parade.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Thank you for staying. Appreciate it.
You said it, it probably said an email of inviting anybody that's, have you all welcome to go.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, have a good night.
All right, we're going to move on to an update from, on Royal Crest from our town manager.
Update. Just so you know, we do have the planning board coming to your next meeting on the fourteenth to do a joint meeting. There is a public hearing for Royal Crest tomorrow and then again on the fifteenth, so it's great timing that they'll be here on the fourteenth. I wanted to review just some of the changes that have happened since they were with us last. And so there were some changes that were made to the program in January. They significantly increased the setbacks on one fourteen to at least seventy feet from the property line. It's approximately eighty-seven feet from the roadway, with the only exception being the Signature Building at the Town Green, which is closer to the road as a placemaking gesture. The student housing building now is now set back a hundred and forty-six feet from the property line, a hundred and sixty-three feet from the roadway. Most of the existing mature trees on Route one fourteen are now going to be remaining, which was a big deal for us, so we were excited to see that. The setbacks in the property line around the entire site are in all cases equal to or greater than the last plan. They increased the amount of open space. They extended the walking and bike path through to the front of the site. The buildings on one fourteen have been redesigned to create more variation and to fit into the character of North Andover. All the buildings are now a maximum of four stories. So some of them, if you remember correctly, particularly the dorm, were five stories. Now everything is a max of four. All buildings are a maximum of seventy feet, with the only two exceptions being the architectural placemaking elements at the hotel and that signature building that we talked about before. They introduced a district concept for our one neighborhood feel, and they reduced the program again. So remember that they did make a reduction back in August at our request. They'd made another reduction in order to create these setbacks that the planning board had, had talked to them about. So they reduced the student housing by a hundred and seventy-six beds. They reduced the townhouses by one, and they reduced the office building by fifteen thousand, five hundred square feet. So when they come on the fourteenth, we do anticipate Royal Crest will be here as well in case you have questions for them and so that you can hear more about their plan. The planning board will be talking to you about the zoning that they are considering. And we hope that we'll be also discussing the development agreement. We're very close to having that finalized as well. So, you know, things are, are moving along towards town meeting, and we'll have a lot of action, I think, at the meeting on the fourteenth.
And that meeting will be at the senior center, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Senior Center.
Yeah. Do they have some room?
I think we probably want to start here and have your meeting and then the joint meeting.
Yeah, so we'll have our meeting and then we'll move to the senior center so we can spread out a little bit.
Great, and I think, yeah, obviously it's a little hard in here without many people. I think it will be a great conversation. If anybody has any questions in advance that they want to send over or anything in particular that they're interested in, we're happy to, to let them know that. I'm sure you've all been paying attention as they've kind of moving through the, this part of this process. But it'll be, it'll be good to have everybody together again because it's been a few months now, so.
I'd say that the most recent planning board meeting was, was very good. I think they took the time to walk through a lot of the concerns that had been vocalized before. And, you know, now there's some track record of pointing to, you know, here's what we heard, here's how we responded, or here are the facts that match that, and giving, I think, people a real understanding of, of what they're doing. Again, you know, ultimately, people can have their own opinion of desire, but in terms of getting the facts out, there's consistency now. And as I said, I thought the meeting was really good at doing that.
Hopefully the development agreement helps with that too.
Yeah.
I think that's going to be an important puzzle piece. Unfortunately, we're just not ready to, to roll it out yet, so.
It wasn't actually as well-attended as I thought it was going to be. I, I thought the room was going to be packed, and I think there were only fifteen people. But I, we didn't, I don't ever remember them scanning the crowd, but I heard Jim and Etan say that it was like fifteen people in the room, so.
Well, I think the development agreement's also important because the other thing I got out of the meeting was really solidifying Merrimack's kind of interest and, and actions going forward. I think the development agreement really helps nail that down because I think there's. And I think the development agreement really helps nail that down, because I think there's, there's sort of questions around it. And as well as they've been cooperative, I think folks would like to have the same kind of clarity that we're having with Trinity, with the development group, so I think that's, I'm really glad we're close to that. That's a key piece of having confidence.
Me interesting couple of weeks.
So hopefully we can get all that together in the next couple of weeks and have a good conversation with the planning board meeting. I know it'll be, I thought last meeting went really well. It was a good time to talk about the project and hear their perspective, and they could hear ours, because I think we all hear different things from different people. But it would be good if, yeah, we could get the development agreement and kind of get all on the same page.
Don't worry, I'm coming to it, Jean. Jean, don't make me sit there again. Poor Jean.
No.
Any other questions on Royal Crest for now? No? Okay. Alright. Facilities Master Plan 2 report.
Thanks to the working group, we have a report. So exciting. So the report is attached to the program. And we are working, and it sounds like we have a date, so it looks like on April 4th, we are going to have a town hall about the Facilities Master Plan 2. It's going to be kind of like we did the Amazon Town Hall, where we went to CAM. People could email questions in or call us. I think people seem to like that format, because we were accessible, they didn't have to leave their houses. I know I like that. So people can, you can call us from your pajamas if you want to and ask us questions about the Facilities Master Plan 2. So we'll be doing a full presentation, probably pretty similar to a lot of the other presentations that we've already done. But hopefully this one will be either including or not including MSBA funding, because that meeting is on Wednesday at 10:00 AM. So we'll have information about that by then too. So we're really excited. They did a great job in their report. Kudos to the team, they put a lot of work into it, and we're pretty excited to roll it out.
Yeah. Yeah, it's really a culmination of years of all this work, and I know it's all in one document, so people can reference that and see where we started and where we came from and where we're headed.
Now we have to add the bubble for the school bubble, but.
The school bubble. And it is, it's a plan, right? It's a, it's something, it's a working document. It's somewhere to head towards, but it will work over time. And I think we talked a little bit about the plans that are shown for the schools and the buildings. Like those are just placeholders. This is really the development documents, and then you're going to get in, or schematics, then you're going to get into design development, and then you're going to get to construction documents. So there's like a long way before we get to final buildings, and a lot of input needs to happen through that, so. A lot of work to do.
It's gonna be good though.
Very exciting for the town. Alright, and then we'll move on to the Mast dot Route 114.
Alright, I'm gonna go pretend to be Jean, real quick. Okay, so as part of the Mast dot project, there has been some conversation. I'm just gonna call her back up here. Let's see. Alright, there has been some conversation regarding an intersection. Is it good? Can you see it? So it's 114 at Hillside. This is the, what you're looking at right now is, went away again. Okay, alright. So the map I'm showing right now is the current condition. So basically, if you're not familiar with this area, this is the Chestnut Green at the Andover's parking lot. There's a dentist, an orthodontist, allergy doctor, law office. And it can lead into, from the parking lot, onto Hillside Road as well as Buckland Road. So you basically can drive from 114, cut through the parking lot, go onto Hillside, or go through Buckland. Or you could come from Hillside and Buckland or 125 and cut across over to 114 through the parking lot. As part of the 114 project, the engineers at Mast dot had brought forward a design change. And this was the design change that they had brought forward. So basically, they had recommended cutting off. I'm sure I can, let's see.
If not, no worries. We don't need to take that.
So they had recommended cutting off the vehicular access from the parking lot. So they had determined that they did not think it was safe for vehicles to cut from 114 through the Chestnut Green Park Lot and back into this neighborhood that way and through, through into 125. Our public safety personnel had, had agreed with that. At the public hearing, the last public hearing, there was a resident who I believe was with us, who had asked Mast dot to look at a few other concepts. I believe he lives over in that area, correct? And uses that, that cutoff. So Mast dot had come forward and met with the town last week to review a couple of other concepts. And so just to kind of understand the current concept a little bit, just want to back up a little bit. So today, the residents are able to access Hillside and then cut across the Chestnut Greens private parking lot and exit onto 114 from Chestnut Green. The current design would still allow, so the design that's being proposed, the one that we're looking at right now, would still allow residents to access Hillside going south, which spills onto the Andover bypass. Drivers seeking to get to 114 would need to utilize the bypass to get there, so they wouldn't be able to cut through the parking lot anymore. The design creates pedestrian access to 114, but it restricts access to Hillside going north and from Chestnut Greens parking lot. There would be a new signalized intersection that would be introduced at 114 and Hillside with crosswalks, and would create a safer condition for pedestrians. Because of this and the improved design at Hillside coming off of 114, Chestnut Green noted to the designers that they might consider even closing their existing curb cuts directly on 114, which would also be a safety improvement. The town met police, fire, DPW, and I think Jim Stanford's still here, John's still here, Andrew's still here. Andrew led our meeting with the state. We went through all the alternatives, which I will show you in a minute, with the state. And for the variety of traffic safety reasons, the consensus is that we would like to stay with the design as proposed. But we also wanted to have this conversation, because we think it's important for, for you to all know that a resident did raise concerns, that the state did look at different scenarios. So I just want to run quickly through.
What is the problem they're trying to solve? I mean, so, I mean, this has been happening for years. Has there been a history of accidents in there? Has there been a history of unsafe conditions?
Technically, you're not supposed to be able to cut from a major 114 roadway to another major highway to 125.
That's why the, that's why the guardrail is there.
Yeah, yeah, no, I know.
Cuts that off.
Right, so when they're doing safety improvements, if they see something that's technically not a legal roadway, they fix it. And so they're trying to just create the pedestrian access that would be safe. So they did run through a few other concepts with us, which I will zoom in on here. So this is the proposed design. And this was the second one. And my friends in the back may need to help me explain them a little bit. But you can see that they basically did a potential raised intersection, so they extended the road all the way down. And then put it in kind of an intersection that could go either way. Don't really know why you would travel in this direction, but you could travel in that direction. The next one is similar. You can see you've got one lane of traffic that would go into here. The other lane of traffic would only travel in this direction out. So you could take a right only.
So you couldn't access Hillside from 114. In that concept.
Correct, right. It'd be a one-way connection, yep, northbound. This next one is a one-way connection southbound, so you can see it's kind of the opposite. They're coming down this way and it creates a turn through here. And then the last one, which is, it's funny how all of the plans are differently sized, but let's see. This one creates an even longer roadway, extending kind of out to the bottom road here. Sorry. And I can't read it when I show you the whole thing, so I'm gonna have to zoom back in again, so one second. This would be a closure at Buckland Road.
Where's Buckland Road, sorry?
It's this road right here. It ends here. So the road, the road here.
So you could get out of the neighborhood.
Right, so we reviewed all of these with Mast dot. I'm just gonna go back up so I can see what that little note said. So we would, we required the T, the fire department would require the T there in order for a fire, for a fire truck to turn around. We don't allow any more dead-end roads. There's not room for a cul-de-sac, which is why it's a T. That's a new thing over the last five years, but it would close at Buckland. So we reviewed all of these with Mast dot. And the recommendation from the staff is to stay with the original plan. I just wanted to bring them all to your attention tonight.
Can you go back to the original?
Yeah, this is the original here.
Can you blow it up, please?
And so you can see it, it cuts off the access to the parking lot, and it creates a pedestrian access here. So you'd be able to walk from 114 down the road and cut through, there's a pretty little crosswalk right here, and get to the road that way as a pedestrian, but you would not be able to drive down it anymore. The way it currently looks is.
So that would dump you into the parking lot, though, that particular solution, right? Is that where that's ending up?
You would be able to take a right from 114 and go into the parking lot. You'd be able to exit the parking lot, but you'd no longer be able to come onto Hillside and Buckland.
Yeah.
What am I missing?
So it just means that if you wanted to get into a community, you just have to literally go to light, take a left, come in from the other side.
Yes. You'd have to go around.
But it does, you know, having, living adjacent to that neighborhood and friends in that neighborhood, one of the things that really makes that neighborhood great is that you really feel safe. Like they're literally, Halloween, you know some car driving through there is not somebody in that, that neighborhood. You know, we've, we've literally stood outside at friends, how's it going? Like, where's that car coming from? And that, and I think that, to me, is one of the, one of the great things that, that this can do, which is it keeps that neighborhood sheltered from kind of all this development around it. But you still have good access to Chestnut Green and I think those, those other, those other areas, so. And all the trade-offs there certainly seems to be the most practical.
We don't need a vote, a vote or anything like that. We just wanted to, this is really informational. But we did want to let you know that there was concern. The, the state did bring forward several different scenarios. We appreciated that, it was very responsive, particularly at the design stage. We hope that they're just as responsive to other people along the route that are showing concerns. This is the current, in case you're forgetting. And I'm sure there's engineers in the room who would love to save me from myself. They're enjoying this, so. Thank you.
I remember when they blocked it off. That was, people use that road a lot. But it was illegal. You can't have two state roads connected via a short road like that.
So like, it's only 35000 Road, which is part of that development. And I think what you don't see is, is beyond Buckland is Meadowwood and Nadine. There's about 90-plus homes that are back there. And pretty much everyone, I don't know anyone who doesn't, they, they utilize a cut-through. Legal or not, it's, it's there and it's, it's used. And so I drafted, I watched the meeting and I drafted some, some concerns that I had. We had some neighborhood meetings about it. I had, I don't know, 15 or 20 different other residents that, that added concerns and signed a petition. That it, more than anything, it's a safety concern, that, that we're basic, I mean, Chris is correct. He, he knows the neighborhood and trick-or-treating is great and all that. But we're also now trapped in there. So three times since, I wrote it down since January 5th, I've basically been trapped at one point or another. There were two police cars that blocked the road and I had no way in or out. They were responding to a neighbor, I don't know what about. But I, I had to leave the neighborhood, go all the way around, make an illegal turn to come up 125 the wrong way, because they, they, there's an island that's, that's blocking Meadowwood. Utility workers were there, I have pictures of that from, I forget, late January. They were blocking the entrance into Hillside. So I was sitting at the light at Kinsman, and I'm like, well, this is exactly why having one entrance is, is difficult. And then there was an accident about two weeks ago on 114 where the traffic was all the way down to 125, and you couldn't leave the neighborhood, even though I was trying to go down to Middleton. So it, I'm not looking for a cut-through. I don't think anybody in our neighborhood is looking for that street to open wide up. But I think there's some, some other ways around it. So I really appreciate you guys looking at it and, and talking to Mast DOT. I think at a minimum, and I don't know who controls this, Mast DOT said that they don't, it's, it's outside of their jurisdiction at the moment, but the light at Kinsman at, at your house, to have a flashing left light, like they do at Burger King, which is a much busier intersection, we're gonna have, I don't know, 180 to 250 cars all coming into that one entrance now, where it used to be sort of coming from both sides. So I, I think at a minimum, if, if Mast DOT could, could work on the light, I know it's, it's not part of this project, but on the 125 side, to alleviate the traffic coming, coming and going, so.
And that island, I would say also, while you're looking at that island, because that was put in, because we had all the accidents there, it certainly.
I mean, if we could have an, if we could have access into Meadowwood from that island, that would be.
That would make all the difference.
There's at least a couple entrances and exits.
Yeah, yeah.
And if you haven't driven down there, you, you can't have a fire engine and anything else. Like if there's a car there, emergency vehicles just, they won't get through, but.
Melissa, could you scroll to some of, like, just one of the options, maybe?
The one-way option was not one of mine, and I, that's brilliant.
Which one? They put together quite a few, I was, yeah, I, well.
Is this one?
Maybe, yeah, maybe even that one. I mean, does that? Does it allow, does that? I, I get your point about having one entrance. And my concern when I saw these was now you, your neighborhood becomes the cut-through.
I think it will.
And that.
It, it, it doesn't. So, so right now, when, as it's proposed, so if we can imagine where that dot is.
Yeah.
No, hold on, I'm, I'm sorry. If, lower on the map. Basically, when you take a left at, at Kinsman and Hillside, right, lower, Chris.
Yeah, that's like down here.
No, a little bit. You basically, I, we have to navigate through the neighborhood anyway when we come and go. So everyone in that, whether you here and off the map, has to navigate through like three different streets.
Yeah.
So.
And that's fine for the neighborhood, but I'm, like, I'm thinking Waze is gonna start shuffling.
So, so that's why, again, in our, in our neighborhood meeting, nobody wanted that open.
Okay.
And, and agreed.
Okay.
Like, I don't want it open.
Okay.
But there's also a, a big stretch of land there that, instead of putting the, the, the proposed is a, is a mass at the Chestnut Green exit, which is currently there. One of the thoughts was just move that further down the road. Like, why does it have to be right there? If, if it's moved down, people still can't cut through, but neighborhood residents could get out on, on either side. And then Waze wouldn't take someone that way, because they'd literally have to navigate through a neighborhood that, if they did it once, they're not going to do it again. It just, it wouldn't make any sense, unless there's a major accident. I mean, of course, you know, one-offs would happen.
So you're saying bring that further?
So that's the proposed, yeah, in that, that pedestrian path in, in green area, if it slid down somewhere else. Now, you know, I, the T for fire trucks and whatnot, I don't, I don't know anything about that. So maybe it just isn't conceivable to do it.
Is, is there a reason that you don't, or is, is it the cut-through reason that you guys were concerned about opening that?
Yes.
Yeah. Which one?
They're all saying yes.
Which one of us?
I'll be very clear. I was, I was a facilitator in this whole process. I have no dog in the fight other than to facilitate the process, the communication moving forward, making sure that Mast dot, uh, did in fact try to address, uh, community concerns. So to Melissa's point, I do think they've been responsive. In the discussions that we had, so we had the, uh, police department represented, uh, DPW, as we mentioned. I think, uh, fire department wasn't in that particular meeting, but I think they had an opportunity to, to discuss, um, the issue late, at a later point. And I think the, the overarching concern was, uh, yes, cut-through traffic, limiting the amount of traffic that would be coming off of 114 down into that neighborhood. The thought here being that, and I understand, um, uh, the residents' concern as far as, uh, you know, issues that he has encountered and others have encountered on, uh, coming into the neighborhood from 125. But the thought was they would still have access at two points of egress, uh, onto 125 to get back up to 114. And while that is true that, you know, it takes a couple more minutes to do that in this scenario, we didn't wanna leave the reliance on getting through a private parking lot to exit onto 114.
Right, yeah, I don't. We shouldn't be going through a park.
So that combined with the, the issue of potential, um, cutting through the neighborhood from 114, creating more congestion, potential confusion, and potential safety issues in the neighborhood was the concern coming from the police department. So given all that and giving, given, looking at all the, all the alternatives, sort of the consensus view from the public safety DPW perspective, um, was keep the design in place as it is now. So that's where we landed.
Is Mast dot open to looking at those two exits on 120? Cause that's their jurisdiction.
I don't know, but I'm happy to have the conversation. So if you wanna give, where'd you go? I can certainly address it with them and we can see what we can do. I mean, one other thing that we could think about here is creating just public safety access, like a gated public safety access, which we do other places. That way, if there was an emergency in the neighborhood, they could, public safety could open the gate. We do it at some of the high schools and middle schools and stuff. I mean, it'd be less attractive than this green area would be, but if they did run into a situation where they had to close you out, it may alleviate it. But why don't you give me a call tomorrow and we can look at it?
I just wanna quickly say, I think what Mast dot's trying to do, I think they would be amenable to a further conversation. I do think they just wanna close the case as soon as possible, so they could. Whatever, whatever the end result is.
Right, but it's a large neighborhood with two exits onto a major thoroughfare and those turns are not easy. So if there's something that, um, you know, this project obviously is, um, a big corridor for us, but there are going to be residual effects that, and we've talked about a townwide traffic study, because there are going to be residual effects to what they're doing. As much of an improvement as this might be, um, there's, you know, areas surrounding it that we need to make sure we, um, are cognizant of.
I can definitely have that conversation. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for the time.
Are you staying for the Schofield mill?
Oh, well, I can move over there. I don't have many pictures for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
So this is again, it's just a brief update on the Schofield mill. So, um, find my notes here. As you know, we've been holding off on, I'm gonna keep looking at Stan the whole time talking about the Schofield mill. Give him guilty deer eyes, but, um, as you know, we've been holding off on moving forward with the rehabilitation due to costs. Once we opened the floor up, it was obvious that the damage was more than we had realized. And then additionally, COVID has made things so much more expensive, so we have, have been kind of in a holding pattern. We did meet two weeks ago and make the decision to have an architect come in and just take another look at the property to give us a new estimate based on the current conditions. Now that we've done this exploratory work, now that we've taken floorboards out, we can at least kind of take an assessment of where we are. So Steve Foster has prepared specifications and is currently soliciting quotes from the architect to do the work of the, of the, basically the design schematics and cost estimates. I know this has been frustrating for many people and slow-moving, so we appreciate the patience. We're continuing to kind of move through the process. I'm continuing to try to guilt Stan into taking it, um, and fixing it for us, but I don't know how long that's gonna take, so I am exploring other options as well. But we, we are kind of in a little bit of a holding pattern. But, you know, we, maybe we'll be surprised. I don't know. You know, I think one of the things, there's two things I think that are, are difficult. One, we have to find an architect and a contractor who has the knowledge and experience to work with historical buildings, right? I mean, we're using historic CPC funds. It's the first mill. So we really wanna make sure that we're, we're doing a justice to the building, one. Two, um, whether we like it or not, we have to use prevailing wage. So it, it really causes projects to be much more extensive than, than any of us like. Um, and, you know, based on my conversations with thrift shop, I know that they're very frustrated because they've been uprooted. So we, we are continuing to, to understand that. But unfortunately, that's where we are right now. So we will continue to move forward. We'll update you when we get back with the architect. And we have a good schematic and we have good cost estimates. We'll bring those forward to you again, so we can talk about it.
And what was the source of the damage underneath the floors? Was it pests? Or was it water or a combination?
Powder post beetles.
Powder post beetles?
Powder post beetles ate the posts.
They eat, they eat the wood, it's like the little, like the holes.
Because of business, I mean, they're very, very slow moving.
They make dust.
They take years to really make some serious damage, but they can absolutely make very serious damage.
So they eat the, they basically eat the insides of the poles?
So you don't see it.
Foundation, so you don't really know?
You don't know what's coming.
Yeah, you would see a pile of dust on the floor if you were inspecting it, but unfortunately, this was under the floor. So there was no way for them to know, except that the floor had gotten very, very squishy.
The walls are elastic.
My, my opinion is that things look like they're sinking a little bit. So I'll, I'll be very interested and curious to see what. I'll be very, it, it's hard, right? I mean, it's, it basically is on the water. It's tough. So we, we'll see what the, what the architect says.
What, what is our end goal here? Is it to make it structurally sound or is it to make it usable?
That's a great question. It'd be nice to make
Hopefully both.
I, I'd like to make it both, you know? It doesn't behoove us to have a vacant building. It costs us extra money to insure it. He's not in the long as our risk, risk manager over there. It costs us money, extra money to insure a vacant building. It is really a drain on our resources, right? Posty Foster walking through there all the time, making sure that it's okay. So it, it doesn't really do anything for us to have a vacant building on our, on our books. So the best-case scenario would be for us to get it in a good usable condition. You know, if we want to have a tenant in there, we have to put it out to bid. It has value of more than $10,000, that building, so it obviously would need to be bid back out. And that's a decision that we'd have to make. Right now, we are still storing the thrift shop's items, um, because it was a sudden, um, removal unfortunately, so that's something that we have to continue to address. Yeah, it's a tough situation, so.
It began with a tough situation and unfortunately, it's evolved to another tough, I mean, it began because of the fire.
I just wanted to add one comment to the town manager's perspective, which is, there could be some situation where the historical society could be part of this mix. In a way, this is sort of like a mini Stevens estate, right? It's something a town has that it doesn't necessarily want. But it doesn't, it, it doesn't wanna get rid of it either. I mean, it doesn't wanna tear it down because of its historical significance to our community. So there could be some situation down the road where the historical society gets involved to manage the property for historical purposes or to work with the thrift shop and use it for some historical purposes. So there could be some other arrangement where the town wouldn't necessarily have to have day-to-day responsibility for the facility, once it was fixed up. So that's another possibility, you know? Something that could happen down the road, uh, once everything sort of starts to sort itself out. And I, you know, I, I, I think the town manager has been very diligent, but very appropriately cautious about stepping up to this. It is kind of a, kind of a rat's nest to get into. So, you know, it, it's gonna take some thinking to decide what to do. And, you know, we had talked early on about, you know, it's a historical building, but do we wanna spend $2 million or some big gigantic number on a historical building? You know, to have it sit there, what do we wanna do? So, you know, I think
For those at home, we don't have an, a, um, an estimate that it's $2 million. Like, people gotta hear that.
Yeah, I know, I know, I know.
You just pulled that, yeah, out of the ear, so I just didn't wanna scare everybody at home.
That's why, uh, most of us never say anything, any numbers at all. But the point being, um, we had talked about the fact that large numbers would discourage interest in the project because it may not be worth it, depending on how much it would cost to renovate the building. So, you know, that would be something we'd have to think about. You know, there are other approaches. You could do fundraising, for example. You could fundraise to pay for the renovation of the building, that, so it wouldn't cost the town anything.
How about, let's call this old house?
Maybe they'll take it on.
You never know.
Never know.
Well, I, I do think, uh, the chairman's comment though about, you know, this is not a Field of Dreams moment, right? Like, there, we need to have a destination, or at least possible definitions or in focus, because that shapes literally our choices now, but also I think we have a fiduciary responsibility. You know, if you're gonna be the caretaker of this asset and you're gonna invest in this asset, it's a very reasonable question to ask, what the heck are you gonna do with this, right? You bought this car. You're gonna fix up this car. Is it sitting in a museum or are you gonna use it? What, what are we doing, right?
Well, and, and, you know, the two alternatives that you could think about for that, and they might influence how you wanna deal with the restoration, would be to let the thrift shop return, use it as a retail location. That's one option. The second option would be to turn it into the Parson Barnard House as a mill. A historic building that's used for historic purposes, not as a day-to-day retail establishment. Would that influence the way you would renovate the building and the amount of money you'd wanna spend on it? And then you would take that over and use that for educational purposes, historical purposes, but not as a retail store, you know? So those could be two ways to look at how you'd wanna proceed with a renovation. And it might influence what the cost might be and what the end result might be. You know, I, I could certainly see it as a historical structure that would be used for educational purposes, you know, because that's what it is. It's not a retail building. It was a mill. And that's what's, and that's its importance to the community. So that's something that, you know, we could be thinking about as we get down the road with architects and designs and stuff.
You know, one of the things I think is, we have as a benefit right now is that we, we have a very blank slate because we have the building behind us too that's gonna be vacant soon, right? And so there's a grant application out right now that Andrew and I have been working on. When I say Andrew and I, I mostly mean Andrew, but, um, and it's to have someone come in and do a feasibility study for that property, right? What, what, you know, what needs do we have internally? And then what could we RFP that property for that things would go into it? And that was something that we had mentioned to the thrift shop in the past. That might be a great spot for them. Moving forward, we could do an RFP for that. But maybe we, maybe we conclude that parcel too and say, you know, we actually want you to look at these two parcels and look, look at them kind of holistically. I mean, they're not far from each other. You know, are there complementary uses that we could think of? Maybe that's not a terrible idea. We're in a good spot, cause we actually have more space right now than we've ever had before. No. Yeah, just getting all this space ready, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to the warrant for our March 29th, 2022 annual election. I will entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the, um, approve and sign the warrant for the March 29th, 2022 annual election.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion, questions, comments, changes? We can't do anything. All those in favor? Aye. The warrant is set. We are four weeks out from, from the election, right? For, well, in case, well, everybody, in a case anybody doesn't know, it will be for a select board seat, a school committee seat and a housing authority seat. And the election is at the high school. All right. And then we have a request from Nadine Levin of Pipe Dream Cupcakes for a mobile food truck permit. And I, she is not here, but everything is in order and it's for Main Street. My only question was, is it for a specific date or for the year that she can come and go?
It's her yearly.
Okay.
She has to get her, um, truck inspected yearly.
Inspected yearly, okay. All right.
I move that the select board approve the request of Nadine Levin of Pipe Dream Cupcakes for a mobile food truck permit.
Motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. All right. Right, you guys can see it from, right, yeah.
And they're only this big.
All right, uh, let's see. Now we have the appointment of Sean Cavilcan, Cavilhan, is that right? To the planning board as an associate member from the town manager.
So we interviewed quite a few people. Um, this is an associate position. I don't know that we were that clear when we originally posted it and I think I disappointed some people when we actually did the interviews. But it is an associate position, so as you all know, it's not a voting member unless, um, some special permits once in a while or if somebody has a conflict. So Sean's actually fairly new to town. He just moved here, um, two years ago. And he has a really interesting background. He mostly works in biotechnology startups, which, um, when we had our conversation, he told me he thinks the Merrimack Valley will be up and coming in, in the next couple of years. So nice to kind of have that, that background. He has brought a lot of projects forward through zoning board of appeals and planning board of appeals in his business, but never before ours, so, um, it's one of the questions we always ask and it's nice to hear. He met with me and Jean and he also met with, with Aton, um, the chair of the planning board. Because as you know, the planning board is, um, a group that really meets a lot. And they have to have a really kind of a, an interesting kind of team dynamic, right? They, they may disagree, but they need to be able to do so respectfully. They have to really have a wide, diverse group of opinions. Um, and so it's always good to get their kind of, um, interaction on how they think a new member will fit. So, you know, he, we went through the process and, and this was who we selected. So we're pretty excited. Um, it's always nice to have somebody who's new to town, um, come on too. So it's nice to see that.
Could you, could you explain again, so as the associate member, he's not a, would not be a voting member?
No, associate member's not, non-voting unless somebody's conflicted out.
Right.
So for instance, um,
But what if he is conflicted out? Then he wouldn't, he wouldn't, he wouldn't accept sitting on that particular issue.
Oh, no, if he was conflicted, he wouldn't be able to.
And the reason I, I mentioned it just before the meeting, I did get a, an email that just, I have a few concerns about.
So no, if he was in a butter to
But that's really not fair for me to say or go into detail because he's certainly not here. Has, was nothing against him personally.
Yeah. If you, so if somebody, uh, when, if you're conflicted out of a project, it's typically cause you're in a butter, right? So say I live next to town hall and we were having a project that was being done at town hall, I wouldn't be able to vote on that project, right? Because I was a direct a butter. So that's typically what, what would conflict someone out. So if I couldn't serve, the associate member would serve on my behalf.
Right, that's how I understood it, because I'm glad Right, that's how I understood it, but I'm glad you're saying it, so people at home understand how it works as well.
I don't know of any projects right now that we have pending that any of our current long-term members cannot vote on. So like our big projects that we have right now, like the Royal Crest zoning, um, obviously there's no conflicts.
No secret there.
No, there's no conflicts, um, that I know of. I think someone would've already said something, I would hope. Um, you know, I don't know of any other big planning board projects right now. I'm trying to think, but we don't, I don't know of any that have anybody conflicted out at this point. So at this point, he would just be the associate member. It's good to have an associate member, because if some, a lot of our projects, as you know, can take years. Uh, and so it's good to have someone there, because, for instance, Kelly was our associate member. Um, she was there for several years, learning about the projects. We had a member who could no longer continue to serve, and she was able to step right in, having knowledge of the projects, having knowledge of the zoning, and really having a really good background already. Um, so I always, we call it associate, I always call it like a planning board member training, uh, because they get to know the community better, they get to know the zoning, they get to understand how the, the board works. But currently, he would not be voting on, on any of those projects. Just listening. And he can take part in the debate.
Any other questions?
No, I just wanna say for the record, it was nothing against this gentleman, that, but I did, it did raise a couple of questions for me.
Okay, that's fine. He seems lovely. I think you'll all enjoy meeting.
All right, I will entertain a motion for Sean's appointment to the planning board as an associate member.
I want to move that we confirm the comment of his choice of, um, sorry, we're gonna be there again, uh, John.
Sean Cavilhan.
Sean Cavilhan to the plan, as an associate member of the planning board with a term ending on June 30th, 2024.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Welcome to Sean. Um, and then we will also be reappointing Colleen Martin to the Board of Registars. Um, this is an appointment from the Democrat, Democratic Town Committee. Um, every, is it every year they reappoint, or? No, every three years. So I will entertain a motion to reappoint Colleen Martin, who is, um, a recommendation from the chair of the Democratic Town Committee.
Move that the select board reappoint Colleen Martin to the Board of Registars for a term ending June 30th, 2025.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, welcome, or.
Welcome back.
Welcome back, Colleen.
See you in a, in a month.
Yeah. Um, and then we are also going to appoint Bill Callahan to the Elderly and Disabled Tax Fund Committee. Does our subcommittee wanna speak to that?
Um, just that, you know, this was a board that again, I think we had a issue with a quorum, or, and it's.
We're just missing.
Oh, we're missing one.
We needed a full board, so they could do their one meeting.
So, yeah, so they, they meet, I think, one time a year to review and identify possible opportunities um, for elderly and disabled taxation. Um, so Bill is a, um, he has a tremendous record of volunteering in town, as Stan does. So those are, so those are some guys that we can, or some folks that we can always count on, um, when, when we need someone in, in this case. Um, you know, Bill stepped up to and volunteered to join this board as well.
Excellent. I will take a motion to appoint Bill.
I move that the select board approve, uh, appoint Bill William R. Callahan to the Elderly and Disabled Taxation Fund Committee for a term ending June 30th, 2023.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. All right. Thank you to everybody who, uh, volunteers their time to all these committees. Um, the town certainly runs on our volunteers, um, and their support to our town staff. So we appreciate all that time, that, all those that choose to volunteer and, um, give of their time to the town. And, um, we don't have consent items. I'll take a, are there any que, um, comments or changes to the February 7th? Open session minutes? No? If not, I'll take a motion to approve them.
Move that the select board approve the open session minutes of February 7th, 2022 is presented.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, uh, we don't have any old business tonight. Um, do we have anything more from our town manager? Do you have anything else for us?
Can I first say back to the key?
Uh, no, we, we are down to 20 COVID cases, which I think is pretty amazing, right? So we're very excited about that, and we are just gonna remind everyone that the warrant closes on March 14th. So get your articles in, March 14th at 4:30?
4:30.
4:30.
All right, are there any select board updates or comments?
I have one during the tremendous amount of wind unfortunately that we have had on Main Street. Um, we've had some banners coming down, but we are in the process of getting those back up. If anybody happens to have a banner in their possession, because it, um, you know, storefront or, kindly give that to, um, what, town hall, and I'll make sure it gets to DPW, but, um, we've had banners up on Main Street twice prior to this. This is the third time, and we've never had this problem, so I think, but the winds were tremendous this year, so, um, we're on it, but we have to make sure that the roads get plowed first and other different DPW projects, so, and we need a nice day to do it. So I'm sorry for those who, that come down, and, um, we're in the process. Within the next week or so, we should get those back up to where they, is yours still up?
I, I haven't actually looked.
Okay. Just thinking, 'cause you're, you're in that, um.
In the wind zone?
It's like a wind tunnel, right? They're all coming down in the same area. But again, um, not to worry, we'll, we will get those back up.
Anybody else? No, no? All right, that was a chock full agenda.
Lot of updates.
Lot of updates, and next meeting will be March 17th. We'll start here, we'll have our meeting, and then we'll go to the senior center for a joint meeting with the planning board. March 14th, what did I say?
You didn't think of some Patrick's.
I am, sorry.
It'll be just as fun now. It'll be just as fun.
March 14th, okay. All right, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. All right, thank you so much.